All right, everybody join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trusty Arnold will be with us a little bit later. First item up is, we are going to table the code book adoption. We're gonna move on to the next item.
Public hearing number two. But then as the code book adopted the road, it's supposed to be level law number one, it's not Wilton's stable, so no invalid. So for public hearing two, former local law number two is now number one, year twenty twenty five. Be enacted by the village board and the village Homer's follows section one title modifying the official year of the village of Homer. Section two statutory authority, this local law is being enacted by the order to speed the votes home pursuant to its authority to adopt laws of the New York constitution, New York state municipal rural law and the New York state village law. Section three corporate sentence, the official year of the village of Homer of New York shall begin at twelve noon, the first day of January and end on the first day of each January thereafter, commencing on the first day of January twenty twenty seven. Section four succeeding of New York state bills law, this local law is intended to succeed provisions of building law of subsection three dash figure two to the extent that is it is inconsistent therewith. Section five severability, any clause, sentence, paragraph, section or part of this local law shall be adjudicated by the court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, such judgment shall be confined in its operation to such clause, sentence, paragraph, section or part thereof directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment shall have been rendered, and the remaining provision shall remain in full force and effect. Next shift's effective date, this local law should take effect immediately upon its filings with the New York State Secretary of State.
All right, does anybody have any on the public hearing side? Questions, comments on the public hearing?
In a motion or?
Not hearing anything, I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
I have a second.
Second down.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Now at public hearing number three, since three times, third time for charge for this one. Village of Homer will hold a public hearing on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five in the town hall in Homer located at thirty one North Main Street. Six P M for the purpose of hearing public comments on the village of Homer's community development needs and to discuss the possible submission of one or more community development grant, block grants, applications for the twenty twenty five program year, the C D G program is administered by the New York State Office of Community and will make available to eligible local governments approximately twenty four point two million in the twenty twenty five C D G program with up to twenty million specifically available for public infrastructure projects with the remaining for housing, economic development, public facilities and planning activities with the principal purpose of benefiting low to moderate income persons. Village Homer is applying for up to two billion C D G funds to construct a much needed Newton Water Works water tank. The hearing will provide further information about the C D G program, moving progress towards beneficial goals, program objectives, and will allow for citizen participation in the development of any proposed grant applications and or to provide technical assistance to develop alternate proposals. Comments on the C G B program proposed project will be received at this time, the hearing is being conducted pursuant to the section five seven zero dot four eight six subpart I of the CFR in compliance with the requirements of Housing Treaty Development Act nineteen seventy four as amended.
Anybody want to discuss this from the public? All right, this time I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion where you close the hearing.
You got a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing number four, an application has been duly made to the board of the village of Homer County of Portland, New York by Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications Inc., a limited liability company organized and existing in good standing and of laws of the state of Delaware doing business at six thousand oh five Fair Lakes Road in Syracuse, New York, one three zero five seven for the approval of a renewal agreement for charter stable television franchise for fifteen years commencing with the date approval by the Public Service Commission. Franchise rule agreement would bring the franchise into conformity with the certain provisions of the Federal People's Appreciation Sports Act nineteen eighty four as amended certain court rules.
Discussion on this from the public?
I'll make a motion or we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good thing brings tax money into the community or into the village.
Revenue.
Revenue, yeah. Not much, but.
It helps. All right. At this time, look to approve the minutes from October fourteenth. I move that we approve the minutes from October fourteenth as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Payment of bills.
Make a motion that we authorize the payment of the bills for the A Fund vouchers number eight, six, four through nine oh four in the amount of ninety four thousand, four hundred and seventy three dollars and twenty seven cents from the F and G fund vouchers number two fifty three through two seventy one in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty five dollars and eighty six cents from the T and A fund vouchers numbers twenty three and twenty four in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and fifty seven dollars and twenty seven cents.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
I'll second that, yeah. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, none heard, carried, at this time, privilege of the floor. Mike, Bob, Jack? Viewers at home? All right. Closing privilege of the board on to old business, grants update. All right, you will see that the C F A application number one, five, two, seven, five, zero. Village of Homer sanitary sewer pump station improvements was rejected in the W Q I P program. I had talked with Jacqueline from the Martin and Lagudas. You can see the reasons why, I also printed out Jacqueline's response to my questions on some of those. Dan is looking to coordinate a back brief with the agency. Jacqueline is trying to get a, to reopen the case for a possible review on there and I do not anticipate, once the state has made a decision, generally I have not seen them go back and change, so I, I think although it is necessary so that we cover all our bases, I am not holding my breath that they're going to change their mind. So we will be looking at the review.
Does that answer the, does that document answer the question of how the engineering report does not meet the required outline, is it so information was not put in correctly or?
So one of the things they did is they did not properly input the sexual harassment training agenda.
So. I see that that's there, is that part of the engineering report?
Well, that's part of the whole packet that they were responsible for putting together. The second thing is they submitted something else twice, which should have been a different packet. And then the third item was, and I'm paraphrasing because you've got the answers right there that I asked for, is that they didn't feel that they had to resubmit previous documents because some of the documents they had already submitted, which they should have, so that is the response from Barton and Lagudas. Uh, Dan, were there any other grants that we were gonna talk about or was that it?
No, smart growth plan, Highland Plan Agreement has been signed and executed and I'd be looking to talk to those folks probably sometime next week to involve all of them in the project.
Yep.
Um, and when Highland Plan takes over, which they will, we'll have to ask for an extension at the end of this year. Yeah, speak of, because it sunsets next September and it'll be, it's a two-year timeframe for, for the update project. I'm also asking for an extension for Dan projects, just have to do the particulars within the statewide system and that should be good to go for going back out to next October, because I choose the same date of October thirty one. And we'll be asking for extension for Walkable Homer, did get some positive note from the state that the redo on James Street uh, with what funds are available, uh, is going to be available for equipment and, and labor, so yes, we will submit for that, once that project gets done and finished next summer. On D R I stuff, but oh, well, just said, stop the housing grant. Google sunset in January, there's one last application, we just did a budget modification today on it and that was successful program, so put about four hundred thousand dollars, I think, out the window.
Yeah, do you know how many, roughly how many homes that was that were?
Over ten?
Forty K if we say. Put in a premise and inside, that's, I mean, forty K goes.
Heating, electrical.
That's pretty darn good, that's ten out of, we only have twelve hundred water bill, so that's how you kind of think of how we do here in the village, from out of the twelve hundred. The Hodge Park. Are we gonna have meetings on how that thing gets designed? I'm starting to think edibleism. Well, that's.
Well, we will, once we get some of these other projects on track, so like we've got comprehensive plan uh, over to Highlands, so that's
That's good.
That's, well, they'll start taking care of that. Some of the other D R I, I want to make sure we have our other projects on track and moving forward before I grab another one. But yes, we will be readdressing, uh, with, we'll start with recreation. Uh, we will be looking at the plan for Hodge Riverwalk Park, uh, because we do need to readdress where we were when it first started versus where we are now and where we want to go in the future. It's gonna change, we may wait until we get the comprehensive plan back because that will provide us feedback as to what residents want to see down there, that will also give us time to start acquiring funds and looking at grants, because we already know that there's certain things that are gonna have to happen as we prepare the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned about who's gonna maintain fruit berries, cleaning up dropped apples. I mean, hell, our B W's stressed out now, half the time they can't paint their little Dagway tank, so I mean, how they gonna pick up crappy apples and raspberries, stuff like that, so I'm thinking that maybe a little less of the fruity kind of stuff and more suits and pads and cause the boles and nice fishing access, that kind of stuff, I don't know.
There's been some herbs that people can help themselves too and.
Yeah, who's gonna eat that stuff after, you know, someone's trashed it or done some nasty stuff in there, like, who knows?
We, we will look at that, that is.
I'm, I'm starting, I thought it was a great idea at one time, by the way. So, but I'm, I'm just thinking of the maintenance of it, it's gonna be a nightmare.
All right.
Okay, moving on.
All right, nothing else from grants. Moving on to the treasures report, we welcome back our treasurer, Mary Ellen.
Hey!
And as we have completed with Pro Nexus and Mary Ellen is taking the reins fully, we are up to our six.
Congratulations.
Or is that the curse?
Yeah.
There's a, a privilege.
We, uh, she has got us, we are up to our six months, which ends in August.
Yeah.
She is working towards closing out September and obviously we're still in October. So we are getting there, we are halfway through our fiscal year and I will, you guys can take a look, you guys got these emailed out to you.
Yeah.
Now, some of the, one of the things that I will talk briefly before I let Mary Ellen, or you guys have any questions, is when you look at uh, the summary of expenditures, and it goes general government support, public safety, public health, transportation, all these, all these things, and to me it really doesn't, it's not intuitive. Uh, transportation is our street admin, it's our D P W, it's our street lighting, public safety is obviously police fire, but also dog control. Home and community services, the zoning, garbage, cemeteries. And we were looking into going into Williamson Law Book to see if we could change some of these titles to make them more intuitive for us and our residents, and unfortunately, these are.
It's a chart of accounts as designated by the office of the state controller, so they're standard across the board.
Right.
And so Williams said, said, no, we can't change them, unfortunately.
Makes sense, so we just need to know for ourselves, as we'll have to have cheat sheets for ourselves to know how these things uh, are accounted for. So with that, I will hand this off to uh, Mary Ellen, we'll start with the A Fund.
Yeah, we'll start with the A Fund. And as Pam already said, uh, these reports are reflected through August thirty first, this is quarter two for our fiscal year. So if we look at the top of the page, um, our revenue in the center, the actual revenue, two million, seven forty five, three eighty eight, ninety three in receipts. Um, expenditures, uh, two million, seven twenty three, eight seventy seven oh one. So we have uh, an overage of twenty one thousand, five eleven ninety two. To the right, uh, for the revenue, uh, there's thirty point one percent remaining budget and expenditures thirty one point seven percent remaining budget, so we're, we're very much on target for the six month now. Any questions, so?
That's encouraging, you know? All right, if we have no questions on the general fund, we'll move on to the water, water sewer.
F Fund, Water Fund. Again, if we look in the center column, our actual numbers for revenue, hundreds of fifty six thousand, forty eight dollars and seven cents. Expenditures, one ninety four, zero twenty nine fifty one, we have a loss of thirty seven thousand, nine eighty one forty four. We look to the right, uh, we have sixty point eight percent of our revenue remaining budget and fifty point nine percent of our expenditures remaining budget. Now keep in mind, for water and sewer, we do quarterly billings, and so, um, this report is just before our third quarter billing, which um, happened in, in October. So uh, there will be obviously more revenue through our, our next quarter. So, which will bring us uh, within our target of our budget. So if there's kind of a lag, so the expenditures are consistent, but the billing is not.
Is there? So you expect that loss to be?
Well, typically water and sewer funds are, are uh, in the positive at the end of the year.
It'll level out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, no pun intended.
Right, so part of it is like, uh, Mary, Mary Ellen stated is that uh, quarterly billing, uh, but our bills, our expenses are continuous.
Right.
So, uh, we still have until the end of the month for to receive water bills, uh, water uh, payments, which we are doing
Yeah, every day.
Every day, and then on top of it with, uh, we have a separate setup with Albany International, which is a major uh, pair. And so there's lags as well, so at the end of the year, we'll, we'll be doing that.
One of the things when we adjusted water and sewer a while back is that we wanted to get a little ahead to go into reserves for major crisis stuff, is that happening or are we just?
Not at this point.
That's not good, that means we may have to raise.
We'll have to look at that during the budget.
That I'm gonna say, because we wanted to put some money, you have a major leak on like Main Street. They're gonna pave Route eleven, I don't know if we go up Route eleven with pipes, but now's the time if we're gonna do anything on Route eleven.
I talked with Keith about that, and he does not anticipate that we should have to do anything in the next ten years or so.
Ooh, that's good.
So, you know, that, I got that same information, I talked with Keith about it, he feels comfortable that, he is more concerned with uh, Yuga Street, and we will discuss that later with the uh, uh, after the elections, so that we know that we're doing this once when we talk about with the, the new water and sewer and uh, projects, but to go back to your question, Ed, yeah, absolutely, uh, Route eleven is looking to be paved and we do not, and I've said that myself, to have them come through and give us a nice new street and then dig it up.
So we all.
So, uh.
That's crazy.
Yeah, so Keith, Keith was saying that the pipe should be good for a hundred years and uh,
Okay.
that uh, the fittings were, are newer, so he feels confident that we shouldn't have to do anything uh, for a while on eleven.
In ten years, they'll repay that, the reason why I was concerned about getting funds is that we had a major leak that went under uh, Route two eighty one opposite the, the water, and it was a hundred and sixty eight thousand to do the underground boring, but it stopped the leak, it, it paid for itself after we fixed it, but you still had twelve hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars into replacing that eight inch pipe that went under a rock. But the motor, when you did analysis, it, it would have taken eight years and would have paid for itself, just unless electricity is, but you had to add the one sixty eight, and that's all I'm concerned is that we have a reserve in the water and sewer for when, you know, the, the four letter word happens.
And I also heard that the uh, sewer uh, treatment plant is looking to keep things flat for this year. So we will take a look at things now, the out years will probably go up, but we'll, we'll take a look at that as well, so that does give us.
Never know if you gotta put a new muffin grinder or something.
Well, I'm talking about the treatment plant, but yeah, if we need to have for our own, yeah, so, all right.
All right, good.
Everybody good with water? Okay, the next is our sewer fund, same scenario as the water, um, quarterly billing, hence there's, we're gonna see a shortfall. The revenue, actual, two hundred and fifty one thousand, two ninety six, twenty two, our expenditures, four hundred and twenty eight thousand, nine oh four, forty six. So we're in the negative one seventy seven, six oh eight, twenty four. We have sixty three point three percent remaining of our revenue budget and thirty seven point three percent remaining of our expenditures.
But to answer your question, Ed, we should be putting aside reserves because that is part of our budget.
That was always our plan, I'm, I'm just, I know, but are we actually doing it, is my question, I guess. But we won't know for a while.
Right.
Thank you for, for favoring.
We're making progress.
Yeah, thank you, that's all, that's all, this has been a lunch.
Okay, any questions on the treasures report? Nope, nope, I'm happy, I will take a motion to accept the treasures report as written.
Make a motion that we accept the treasures report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up is uh, an adjustment for twenty five Redwood. Missing credit for may leak.
It fits with our, I'm okay with it. Was it?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we give a credit on twenty five Redwood.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard, I'm going to interject one, we pulled this from last month's, uh, because we're talking about credits here, it is eight Phelps. This does not meet our criteria, if you read through the letter, uh, for uh, does not meet village policy for what we do for credits.
If it doesn't, then I would reject it. The, the Elizabeth and Ed are still reading.
It's our written policy, we have that, that, that it's not for pools, I mean, we have.
No, it is for pool, but it's not for all these other things that are listed there, just because it doesn't go into the sewer, doesn't mean they're exempt.
Got it.
So we do a one-time fill-up.
Yes, already.
And uh, this does not qualify. So with that, uh, I would take a, a motion not to accept uh, the relief request on sewer charges for this uh, account.
I'll make the motion that we deny this account.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Write some notes here. We have next up.
What group plans moves?
Adjustments?
Uh, adjustments.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's in your packet, um, we have a budget transfers, um, and it is three, three pages. And um, what these transfers do is they clean up the negative numbers within the budget. Moving, moving numbers from within the account codes, so Board of Trustees, um, it's saying within the budget codes. And so I have these, it amounts to forty four thousand, five forty seven, ninety six on the final page in budget transfers.
As we all know, no budget survives the initial.
Pretty common.
Right, so uh, as we refine, this is just.
Fine major, I don't say that major.
I make motion that we approve the budget adjustments.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Secondly, this budget amendment.
Yep.
And it is for, yeah, on a ten thousand, forty four dollars and fifty four cents. And it is an amendment to increase our revenue account code A twenty seven oh one, and to increase our expenditures, account code A three one two oh point four five zero. This is uh, police grant expenditures, the, the grants are multi-year. And so what happened was there was expenditures last year for this particular grant as well as expenditures for this year for the grant, we received the monies for the grant just recently and um, this line had a negative balance of ten thousand, forty four, fifty four. But monies came in, so we were able to apply uh, those monies for its this year's expenditures, so that we could zero out the, the expenditures and um, and and we do that by increasing the revenue and increasing the expenditures.
I'll make a motion if we accept the amendment as stated.
And so there will be more of these forthcoming as, as I get further along in the quarter and so we have a nice clean budget at the end.
Yeah, it will be a lot easier.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you very much.
And I leave our last item on the list is, I think we just need to pull my, what agenda? Winter Fest. Um.
Good idea.
So we have different sponsorship levels. I'm looking to get a suggestion from the board as to what level they would like to go with. I believe last year we did six hundred.
That's what I would work.
But I'm open to discussion.
We have that a little extra in our recreation budget, see that would allow us to continue on the six hundred level. Does that sound? If I look to the treasurer. I guess, and we were just talking about rec budget at our rec meeting last week and it's with good shit. Yes, things are. Yeah, so I think.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Uh, I'll accept a motion that we sponsor at the six hundred dollar level.
I make a, we have a sponsor, Winter Fest at the six hundred dollar levels.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Rand has been running in multiple different. Rand has been running in multiple different locations, he will not be with us tonight. Uh, I will go around the horn. Ed, um.
Pretty good, just, uh, having fun. Village is looking good, parade was great. Hey, we'll see.
Ed.
Uh, well, I I tell you, I've been around visiting people in the neighborhood, and I've had a great time doing it. I'm not kidding, it's been really instructive, uh, talking with people, uh, seeing what their concerns are in the village, it's been good, and, um. I gotta tell you, people are so friendly. Because normally, when somebody comes knocking at your door, it's not, it's not always pleasant or whatever, but. People have been warm and welcoming, and I've had, uh, really great conversations with people, there are people that live in the village of Homer. That have remarkable lives, or that you you don't even realize, they're living at the end of the street. Um, you know, and so I've had a wonderful time really talking to people and, uh. I just want to say how great, uh, it has been to talk to people in the community and hear what they're thinking, and so. Yeah, that's been really instructive. Very good. What I have to say.
We've got a great community.
We really do, it's been amazing.
Alright, so I'm gonna piggyback on that, and it's a great community. People can put themselves out there to run for. Local office on a village level adds so much to it, and as a person who is. Very happy to be sitting on the side nuts right now. Yeah, but I'm not running this year, yeah, 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 and it is, it is not easy to put yourself out there, but people do it because they love this community and. Um, you know, I just, I so appreciate the the commitment and the bravery and Ashland for Homer. So, thank you all.
Great community. Well, maybe I should have gone first, because I I have a bit of a Debbie Downer here.
Great, Pat.
I know. Well, kind of bittersweet, uh, Mike Galliotti retired.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh. After, after thirty years, uh, he is moving on, but he's still staying in the village, so. Uh, we've made, uh. If we ever need his services, we've made arrangements for that, so.
He was the prior, uh, D P W chief. Before runners with the suits.
Next, uh, so. Uh, got a Cortland County press release with the federal government shutdown, and the impact on. The November Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits, the SNAP. Uh, we will post this on the village website and on the front and back doors if anybody needs to. But it will also have, um, a food pantries, food connect map. And, or maybe Liz will give us some good news after I get done with mine.
Uh, sure.
But the following information was shared, local departments of social services must continue to process SNAP cases without change or disruptions. Including accepting and processing applications and other case actions. Required notices will continue to be nailed to households. Uh, the Office of Temporary Disability Assistance, O T D A. Will continue to provide additional guidance on communication with households if the shutdown persists beyond November first. And SNAP benefits are disrupted. Temporary assistance case benefits are not impacted by the federal government shutdown. Households that would normally see their November SNAP benefits deposited before November first, with future availability date. Will not see this information for November. Households doing benefit for prior months, including applications received through October thirty first. That are still pending should be processed normally. However, no benefit files will be transmitted to the E B T vendor starting November first. Even if they contain prior month benefits. And then again, for those impacted in need of food, the following links are provided with information regarding local food pantries. Plus, we have the Methodist Church, which has the food pantry ourselves. Uh, I came back from Cortlandville, is doing their budget process. Um. Andrew and I went down last week to present why, uh. We should have our contract fully funded. And they are not doing it for Homer, the city. The Cortland Regional Sports Council or McGraw, they have zeroed out their rec monies for those contracts. Uh, so what we will need to do then is, uh, this is brand new, so if Andrew's listening, he hasn't even heard this yet. Uh, but I will pass this off back to the recreation committee, and for those. Uh, we'll have to figure out what the price is for full, uh, full price for those. Those from that area.
What is their contribution?
Their contribution would have been about thirty-six thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand and change rounding up to thirty-six. Uh, we had the whole breakdown, uh, very comparable, the same as the town of Homer, the town of Homer is. Yeah, fulfilling their contract, which is great, I can't speak enough about that. Uh, I will say this, the town of Cortlandville was equal across the board because they canceled. Uh, not only us, but their city, uh, McGraw and C R S C, so. Uh, we'll just make our adjustments, we are early enough in our process that we can. We'll adjust. Liz, you get to go last, anything for the group?
Uh, sorry, just trying to figure out where we are, and then I just did, um. Yeah, I I saw the, uh. Homer, the, uh, Halloween parade this weekend was lovely, um, I'm very entertained by the. Stay Puft Marshmallow Man. That was my favorite one, um, since I saw them walking home afterwards, but it looked like it was very well attended, there was a lot of folks out. Um, and. Anything that, I don't know if I have any other updates.
Okay. With that, um.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, you're just in time.
Sure, I'll second that.
You're on the record, you're on the record. Alright.